So, welcome and thank you for being with us today, Saturday, October 1st, for the Albany City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Elisa Mills of the League of Women Voters of Berkeley Albany Emeryville. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not support or oppose candidates or parties. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as ballot measures. However, this forum is presented by the Voter Services and Education Arm of the League, which does not support nor endorse candidates. We hope that you are here because you want to make smart choices when you vote. The League is here to help you make a smart choice, and we use a few simple rules to be sure you have the information you will need to help you make that decision through a fair and balanced process. It's important to the League to give the community a voice, which is why we invited the community to send us questions for the candidates in advance. Those questions have been sorted by a team of League leaders to avoid duplicate questions and select those questions that are most important to the community. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate underground rules set for this forum. You can see the rules on our website on the Candidate Forum page. One of our volunteers will also put the link in the chat. KALB is live streaming today's forum. We are recording this forum and the video will be available on our website, L W V B A E dot org, on our YouTube channel, and also through VotersEdge.org slash C A with links on our social media accounts at L W V B A E. There are five candidates on your ballot for the Albany City Council. They are Jeremy Manuel Garrett Pingwello, Nick Pilch, John Anthony Miki, Robin Lopez, and Jennifer Hansen Romero. For the first time this election, Albany is using ranked choice voting. You will have five rankings available. This means you can rank the candidates in your order of preference. During the counting, your vote will find its way to your most preferred candidate that can win or that could come closest to winning. Because of this, you do not need to vote strategically. You can rank the candidate you love first, like second, live with third, and so on, without fear that voting for your favorite will cause your less favorite to win. The only error you can make is giving more than one candidate the same ranking as this invalidates your vote. So rank it up and enjoy your new power as a voter. Now let's go over a few rules for this forum. Each candidate has two minutes for opening remarks. The order was determined by drawing lots. The timekeeper will signal candidates with a green colored window, which will count down the seconds from two minutes to fifteen seconds to go. Then it will turn yellow and then red when the full two minutes is up. Attendees had an opportunity to submit written questions through our website or when they registered for the forum via Zoom. If you have additional questions, you may submit them by clicking the Q and A icon and typing your questions. Our volunteers will take the questions and pass them to me. Please note that the chat function has been disabled for attendees. All questions will be screened to avoid duplication and personal attacks. The order of answering the questions will be alternated, and each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Again, the timekeeper will signal candidates. There will be no separate rebuttals. However, the candidates may choose to use some or all of their one minute to rebut the response given by another candidate. Following the questions, each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. Before we begin, one of the candidates, Robin D. Lopez, has a family emergency this today and will not be able to attend. Here is a statement from Robin Lopez. Firstly, many thanks for the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. My name is Robin D. Lopez, with pronouns he/him. Apologies for not being in attendance as I'm currently with my newborn in the N I C U Neonatal Intensive Care Unit. I intend to bring a new era of young readers, leadership in Albany that can move our city forward intentionally and responsibly. I moved to the U C Village to pursue my PhD at U C Berkeley in Environmental Science, Policy, and Management. Albany is where my family intends to plant our forever roots. Similar to L W V, I too strive to defend democracy and support grassroots efforts. Recently, I have been given the chance to serve the city of Albany directly as a member of the Albany Social and Economic Justice Commission to address racial equity and youth empowerment. As a member of our city council, I hope to continue my work empowering the people and advocating for equity-focused policy, whether it be housing protection, improved sustainable and equitable transportation options, or addressing the climate crisis. I would be honored to have your support. Thank you. Now let's begin with our opening statements for our four candidates who are here. So to begin with, we'll start with Jennifer Hansen Romero.
Hi there. I'm Jennifer Hansen Romero. I was born in Berkeley, raised in Albany, and continue to raise my family here in Albany. I'm third generation in this town and Albany is my home and my community that I work to serve on a daily basis. I currently am a real estate agent with Winkler Real Estate Group on Solano Avenue, and I also volunteer as the president for the Solano Avenue Association. We brought back the Stroll this year, thanks to our cities of Albany and Berkeley as well for their support. And I also have a local Girl Scout troop that we've been working together since they were in Kindergarteners. They're seventh graders now. One is my daughter. And we look to, basically, I lead my Girl Scout troop to essentially become future leaders, learning about environment, learning about leadership, learning about government. I brought them down to pull papers with me so that they could go through that process. And then also, I currently serve on the Economic Development Committee for the city of Albany as well.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we'll hear from Jeremiah.
Yeah, this is Jeremiah. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for inviting me to this. Yes, I've actually been on the Social and Economic Justice Commission for two years. Since 2020, I was appointed by the School Board of Education as their appointee. And while being on the Social and Economic Justice Commission, we've done many things. We've put up a flag at the City Hall with the Aloney Tribe Flag, and it's almost the one-year anniversary since that's happened. During the past two years, I've attended over 200 public meetings, whether that be city council meetings, climate action, planning and zoning. I've attended over 200 public meetings the past two years. Also regarding the Social and Economic Justice Commission, I have a perfect attendance record. I've never missed a meeting. I myself have started a group two years ago. It's called Elaine's Love, and I'm on Thursdays on Solano Avenue every Thursday from 2 o'clock to 5 o'clock P M in front of the Solano Clinic Center. And I pay for unhoused individuals to do their laundry out of my pocket. That's because the city of Albany leadership right now does not have any resources for the unhoused, so I take that upon myself. It costs me about $200 every week. And also during that program, I bring about 500 pounds of food to the same location and pass it out to the community, and I get the food from the Berkeley Food Network. Myself, regarding climate action, I'm not doing yard signs. I'm not doing flyers. I'm not doing T-shirts because yard signs and flyers just end up going to the landfill in two months. So...
Thank you, Jeremiah.
You're welcome. I'm a longshoreman at the Port of Oakland, and that's my career.
Excuse me, we're we're limiting statements to two minutes, so we're going to proceed with the...
Okay, I didn't see a timer. I didn't see a timer up here, so I'm sorry. I went over my time. I can't see a timer.
Okay, sorry. So next, we're going to hear from John Miki.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm John Miki. I'm running for Albany City Council with Robin Lopez and Nick Pilch under the banner of Albany. I was fortunate enough to move to Albany in 2005. This is N U C Berkeley, while living at the University Village. After graduating with a Master of Urban Design degree, which is what I profess professionally, both in urban design and architecture, I was able to find a house in Albany to live in. My children have gone through the Albany School District. In 2010, I put my work experience to serve Albany on the Traffic and Safety Commission. In the time that I worked with my fellow commissioners and public, we passed Albany's first active transportation plan that really brought forth a plan for a future of Albany where it's safe to walk its pedestrian, safe to ride bicycles around our community, and safer for drivers to navigate around our city. I brought to the community my work experience, both in knowledge and building consensus, ability to step back and look at the picture when confronted with pressing issue. I worked to balance the aspirational dream of the community with the short-term influence of changes that were both financially equal and impossible. But above all, I worked truly listening to concerns of residents, Albany, and my fellow commissioners. I was recently appointed to Climate Action Committee where I worked to continue to move Albany forward in a more sustainable and resilient future. I run for council to bring voices to the table to address options and how people move about our town in a safe manner, to address our housing production needs, address transportation as well. Transportation and housing are fundamental to addressing our climate change issues to be a more sustainable and resilient community. I look forward to continue to serve Albany. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Nick Pilch.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thanks very much to the League for hosting this event. I'm Nick Pilch. I'm running for Albany City Council, and I'm running with my Albany Forward slate mates, Robin Lopez and John Miki. I had the privilege of serving as your council member from 2014 to 2020, finishing my second term as your mayor and leading the city through the onset of COVID. Due to Albany's term limits, I had to step off for two years, but now I ask that you have me back again. I led the effort to bring the S O D A tax to Albany, creating funding for many programs for health and youth, including funding school crossing guards. I successfully brought forward and supported a number of other measures that have sustained and increased the city's funding for important programs and services such as public safety, park maintenance, sidewalk repair, and climate action programs. I've had a total of over seventeen years of city service. I've served additionally on city commissions for almost eleven years, currently serve on the Alameda County Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Commission as well. I founded or helped start or held leadership positions in a number of community groups and nonprofits. I'm currently as the Air Club Elected to the Year and a Sierra Club Outings Leader as well. Through my work in the community on commissions and on council, I have a proven record of crafting and funding positive change, including environmental safety and housing initiatives. I instigated the process, leading to Albany's first civilian police oversight body. I'm Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, currently continuing the work that I started on the council. I run to continue the work of this council in climate action, safe and equitable streets for all, economic and social justice, and housing production. I'm endorsed by Mayor Preston Jordan, Vice Mayor Aaron Tiedemann, School Board President Sarah Hinckley, School Board and and School Board Trustees Bonnie Davidson and Brian Dos. And I ask that you vote Pilch, Miki, and Lopez in whatever order you choose as Albany Forward. And just to correct the record, you can vote for five people in this election, all with ranked choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for sharing with us. Now we'll begin questions. Each candidate will get one answer to respond, and we'll be mixing up the order for everyone. Let's start with Jeremiah. And our first question is, what inspired you to run for city council?
What inspired me to run for city council? That's a good question. You know, I think first of all, we need sober leadership. I'm 100% sober. I don't drink alcohol or use any substances. And the city council meetings are usually at 7 o'clock P M, just shortly after dinnertime. And I definitely won't be two glasses of wine deep, you know, during public meetings. So I think we need sober leadership, number one. Let's see, am I only able to answer one with one question or one answer, or do I get two minutes?
You can use up your time, your one-minute response for each question.
Okay, I think we need to have... I'm 39 years old, and I think it's time to turn over the leadership to someone my age. That way, we have new ideas and new things that can happen. There's a lot of people that are in this leadership that have been there a long time, and it's kind of the same thing happening over and over.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeremiah. John, could you answer the question, what inspired you to run for city council?
Thank you. You know, I came to the decision to run for city council. It was a decision that really checked in with my family. I have not had political aspirations in the past, and we knew that this was something that would be trying for us all. But I recognize that Albany, we're in a situation right now where we have the opportunity to continue to move forward and look to the future and set goals that we can accomplish in the short term and the long term. And I really want to be able to build upon the work that I did on the active transportation plan in terms of thinking about the different mode choices people have in terms of transportation, but also understand that I can bring some of the knowledge and work experience I have working with communities on how to address housing prices that we have today and understand the new state laws that apply to every community in California, how that impacts us in terms of how we...
Thank you, John. Now let's hear from Nick.
Thank you. I was inspired beginning with community service. I began to work and found organizations, environmental organizations and alternative transportation organizations, and I was actually recruited by community members to run for council in my first time I ran, which was actually way back in 2008. And so I have been fortunate to continue to have the support of community members in my efforts and was very glad to see, when I got on the council, glad to understand that I could really make a difference in this community and make a positive change and do even more with the service I'd already been doing in the community on the council. And I support alternative transit. I support housing. I support a number of initiatives, and I feel like I can really make a difference by sitting on the council dais and advocating for these good things for our city.
Thank you. And now Jennifer.
Yes, well, much like John said, I also had to check in with my family, my two kids at home. But, you know, for a long time, for many, many years, I've been asked by several community members over the years to finally run for council. Why don't you? And so this time, it was even that much more important. We are losing two women on council who have been wonderful and who are endorsers of mine, both Peggy and Rochelle. And they've served Albany well throughout the years and appreciate that, and they were some of my encouraging factors to go ahead and run. So you know, it's really important that we have more women in leadership, more women in government, and not less. So I felt now is the time. It was really my duty to my community.
Thank you. Okay, now for the second question. We'll start with John, and John, your sound is a little low, but so you might either want to speak up, or if you can change the volume, I think people would appreciate that.
Yeah, I adjusted my mic. Does that sound better?
Yes, thank you. So here's the question, the second question. What will be your top priorities if elected?
Yeah, my top priority by far is making sure that there's better representation, both on our commissions and committees within the community. You know, behind that, I think, are continuing the efforts of making our streets safer and more beautiful for the community and housing. Those are kind of my top three priorities. Built into each of those priorities is though making sure that we as community are fiscally responsible. We're a community with limited budget and limited means, and that may mean that we have to look at the way that we deal with how we maintain our streets differently. In particular, we currently have five different funding mechanisms that all have to do with how we maintain our streets as opposed to thinking of it as one bigger pot of money and way of dealing with, frankly speaking, the largest open space in our community, which is 20% of our community is our streets. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, John. And now, Nick, what will be your top priorities?
Well, there's a number of issues facing the city. Fiscal issues are very important. We have pension liabilities that are facing us, and that will definitely be something I'll be working on on the council. But my main priorities that I'm bringing forward in the campaign are housing, making sure that we have housing for everyone and anyone who wants to live in Albany at all affordable affordability levels, safe streets for everyone, whether you walk or drive or bike or scoot, however you get around, making sure that everyone who wants to get around can get around safely, and it's a question of transportation equity, really. And then finally, I'm known as a climate leader, so fighting climate change will be something that I'll continue to do. I'm doing that right now, working with the Sierra Club, who has endorsed me, and I'm also continuing to do that on the council and looking forward to doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Jennifer. Oh, you're muted. There you go.
Sorry. Well, much like the other two candidates just spoke about, those are some of the key issues, especially the financial piece of things. I'm hoping, you know, in the work that I've been doing with the Economic Development Committee for the city of Albany, I look to find ways to bring more revenue to our city without really only answering that question with further taxation. Therefore, we'd only make Albany that much less affordable as well. So we need to kind of get that balance in there and figure out different ways of generating more revenue so that we can have all of the additional services, safe streets, more housing. That's what I believe we're all about, and we're all looking forward to doing more work there along with the climate crisis that is definitely an impact and looking to bring more electrification to Albany.
Okay, thank you very much. And Jeremiah.
Yeah, can you repeat the question, please?
Of course. What will be your top priorities if elected?
Okay, well, my number one priority will be to listen to public comment. I know myself, there's a lot of public comments, and they're just, they'd go unheard, and that's the voice of the people, so that's what we need to listen to. Also, I plan to take action in the moment like I already do. I plan to bring school zones to Albany in the municipal code. That's going to bring safer streets around our schools. I've been trying to get school zones in our municipal code book for over 10 years. Also, also, like I said, I'm already not doing yard signs or flyers that just go to the landfill in two months from now. I just believe that money for yard signs and flyers can be put toward better use. It could be put directly to feed the homeless instead of, you know, $8 plus tax for one yard sign. That'll provide a meal for somebody. So instead of yard signs and flyers that are kind of bad for the climate, I just put that money directly to the people.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeremiah. Now we'll go to our third question, and we'll start with Nick. So what is working well in Albany city government and what isn't? And how will you work with others to address problem areas you identified?
That's a great question. I think that there's a lot that's working well in city government. I think we have put in place now a number of commissions and committees that are taking public input and feeding it to the city council. I think we're doing a great job. The thing that I that I want to work on is great staff and elected relationships so that we know we can both count on each other for, to implement the policies that the city council enacts. I want to make sure that the city staff is responsive to residents and does the best job of outreach as possible. We always hear that, that the outreach is not as good, and I can't fault the city staff completely for that because you can never you can never do a perfect job of that, but I would like to see us do a better job and make sure that people do feel heard. If it means an extra meeting or two, that's important to make sure that people feel heard.
Thank you. And Jennifer.
That is one of my, one of my key things is communication and collaboration as well as the transparency piece. I've been fortunate to be able to work with a lot of our wonderful city employees and feel I have a great relationship with a lot of them and appreciate what they do. I know many of them are wearing many more hats than really should need be, but but they're doing it the best way that they can, and so I want to help continue to support them. And then also just bringing it out to our community. Jeremiah is absolutely correct in the fact that, you know, we need people, we need to hear our community's voices and really reach out to them in all ways best and not, and also important not to forget our senior community as well, and make sure that they have information that's accessible to them as well. Not everybody's computer savvy, so we need to be upfront and out there.
Okay, thank you very much, Jennifer. And Jeremiah.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question one more time, please?
Of course. What is working well in Albany city government and what isn't? And how will you work with others to address problem areas you identified?
Okay, so there's three questions there. What is working well with the city government? You know, I would say the city clerk is doing an excellent job. I think staff members are doing okay. Some things I would do to fix what's not working or make things better is, first of all, I'd like to raise the Albany Living Wage, basically raising the minimum wage for jobs in Albany. And also, I'd like to create a job within city staff to focus on applying for state and federal grants for eight hours a day. So there should be at least a job for somebody to bring revenue to the city and, you know, create more city jobs for our youth and our senior citizens.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we'll hear from John.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I think the city staff is a really dedicated set of staff, and I really appreciate having gotten to work with them while I was in traffic and safety. But I also recognize at the same time, as has been mentioned, that our staff is often stretched, stretched in terms of what they're asked to do, stressed in terms of the time that they dedicate to their job beyond the nine to five. But I believe that, you know, the areas where we can improve communication, so that's both communication between staff and the public, communication between the city and the school districts. I believe that solutions that we can do for helping staff in terms of them being stretched is continuing to do programs like Civic Sparks Program, which brings in young planners who are bringing... who are bringing in specific knowledge that they gained in undergraduate or graduate programs and bringing that to the city. We've been fortunate to have quite a few Civic Spark members come through the city, to which have now become full-time employees for us, really helping us raise the capacity and capabilities of our staff.
Thank you. And for our next question, we'll start with Jennifer. What are your thoughts and concerns regarding the powers given to Albany's Policing Commission?
I'm going to ask you to just repeat it, just so I make sure I understand it correctly.
Certainly. What are your thoughts and concerns regarding the powers given to Albany's Policing Commission?
Okay, to the commission. So thank you. That's why I wanted to just double check. So I don't, I have not been privy to a lot of those commission meetings. So in fact, I'm not sure if I've sat on any of of those particular meetings. So this is a question that I do not have as much information around. I think that, you know, communication, as I've said before, is really a key piece. And I believe that hearing from our community and working together in a supportive role with each other is beneficial. So as far as as far as the power, I'm just not aware of how much, how much I don't know on the subject. So I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Next, let's hear from John.
Thank you. You know, I think our police department, I personally have had good experiences with them through many trying times personally for my family. On traffic and safety, I was able to do a ride along where you really get to understand what it means to be a police officer that's going around and providing security within our community. I really recommend all residents of Albany avail themselves of that opportunity. But I also recognize that my experience is not the experience of all of our community members. There have been times when my oldest son has come home crying because one of his friends had been either detained or pulled over because of the color of their skin. And so I recognize that our Police Oversight Commission has an opportunity to provide some oversight to make sure that our police are doing the best they can. I also recognize that it's an opportunity for us to ask questions about who are the first responders in situations of mental health. So I look forward to the commission starting and hearing their their insight into how the police could be the best that they can be.
Thank you. And Nick.
Thank you for the question. As I mentioned previously, when I was on mayor, I started the process that led to this Policing Commission, and I'm looking forward to their work. I don't really have any concerns with their their scope of work or their power. I support our police and I support transparency. I support making sure that we know exactly when there are issues with the police or reports of problems, that the public knows about that. And then we have the data about how many and when they happened. Just as John Micky said, I know I have had lots of great experiences with the police, but I also held the mayor's forum, mayor's open house, where I listened to members of the public who did not have good experiences. And so those voices need to be heard and we need to get the data and take action if necessary. But I'm looking forward to their work. I don't have any concerns at this point. Like, I'm looking forward to the extra transparency that we'll get out of this process.
Thank you. And then Jeremiah. You're still muted, Jeremiah. Would you like me to?
Thank you. There's two things here going on with the Police Commission. First, first of all, there's a police commission that was a police commission that's happened. And it's kind of over now, but they they did a lot of good policymaking already and did some improvement. And there's also the Police Oversight Commission that will be starting fairly soon, the next couple of months here. Regarding their powers, I'm not sure about their powers other than just they're an advisory body to city council. And so I'm sure they advise city council on what's going on with that. But I think it's very good for a community. It's definitely work in progress, and I'm very happy and very thrilled and excited to see this policing commission to be a sunrise in Albany.
Okay, thank you very much. And now for our next question, we will start with Nick. How will prospective council members work with restaurants on Solano Avenue to ensure that all parklets are safely wheelchair accessible and fully compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act?
Yes, ADA accessibility is really important in the parklets, and I thank the member of the public for that question. As far as I know, we do have a requirement for ADA accessibility, although I'm not completely sure about that. What I do know is that we've had many hearings at the council and at the Transportation Commission and other commissions about the parklets. And I think we were doing a good job of hearing the concerns, both of the businesses and of the community, and making sure that these parklets work out best for everyone. And speaking of them working out the best for everyone, when we did a survey, community survey about the parklets, everyone, the majority of people, vast majority of people were overjoyed that we had them. And in fact, they are quite a benefit of the community. When I was when I was mayor, council members from other jurisdictions had told me how excited they were about what was happening in Lower Solano and that it was really a really a model. So I'm glad to see we have them, and I'm glad that we're continuing to work on refinements.
Okay, thank you. And Jeremiah.
Oh, once again, okay. Two things here regarding safety and ADA accessibility, both of the utmost importance. Regarding safety, you know, as a longshoreman at the Port of Oakland, there are these things called K rails, and they're cement concrete dividers that could be moved by forklifts. And those are able to stop an 80,000 pound 18-wheeler with the full load. And right now, we have plywood and very temporary structures. So right now, they're kind of very unsafe, but we are working on making sure 200 pounds per square foot is the new rule. Regarding ADA accessibility, that's number one also. And ramps and things like that can be improved and also putting a a table directly next to the sidewalk, so ADA person could just wheel right there on the sidewalk and have access to the to the dining area.
Okay, thank you. And John, what do you have to say?
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I think the parklets have been a wonderful addition to the City of Albany. It is one of the bright lights that can be seen that came out of the COVID pandemic. At the time that the parklets were being considered, the Albany Inside Out group really were proponents for this. And I felt strongly at the time that, given the emergency situation, that it made sense for government to step aside and allow these businesses to maintain some viability. I'm happy and excited to report that the city council actually just two weeks ago approved a permanent parklet policy that actually now ensures that these parklets over the next year and a half will become ADA compliant, will become more constructed in a more permanent fashion and provide a higher level of safety than some of the current parklets provide. I believe that these are a really important thing to bring life to our community and our street along Solano Avenue.
Thank you. And Jennifer.
Hi, yes. So first of all, we love being able to see the liveliness and enjoyment out of the people visiting the parklets. What I do like to say is I had been working along as as the Solano Avenue Association President along with other members of the association and the Albany Chamber, along with the city, to actually put place an actual parklet program prior to the pandemic. Unfortunately, it did jump the gun with some very active community members and got started a little early. But we had been working on devising a plan for safety barriers, ADA complacency. But we had to scramble at the last minute and and do it as it as it was brought out. So I'm happy that the economic development and traffic and safety and the city have been working to put forward this this ongoing program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now for the next question, we will start with John. Within the city, which voices are the most vocal in your opinion and which are inadequately heard?
Yeah, you know, I think we as a community, you know, when I was on Traffic and Safety, my experience was often those those residents who were running into issues were the most vocal, particularly when it came to traffic coming. I would say that what my experience has been both working in Albany and working in other communities, those tend to be homeowners. And I find that in many communities, the renters are not as well represented. The University Village residents in particular, their needs are not represented. And so those are often groups that we as a community work harder to make sure are heard. In addition, you know, those that have work hours that don't follow the typical nine to five. Those are members that often can't attend public meetings. Those are members who often don't necessarily have the ability or time to invest as much into understanding all the issues that are going on in the community and raise their voices and be heard.
Thank you very much. Nick, what do you have to say about this?
Thank you. Yes, it is incumbent upon us as council members to make sure that we understand the voices of everyone in the community as much as possible, not just those who have the ability or maybe the loud voices to be heard better. So as John spoke of, you know, people who are marginalized, people who have less power, we need to make sure that their voices are heard as much as possible or proactively reach out to them so they were getting the voices of all the all the community. It's a fine balancing act. I'd say that, you know, some organizations are better represented because they're well, they're well, they're well organized. But it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we even we we have taken into account the entire cross section of the city.
Thank you. And Jennifer.
Well, that is definitely something that is a key piece, again, with the communication and getting everyone involved. And it's really challenging to get people, you know, oftentimes I talk to community members and, you know, they they don't feel like they have been heard in the past. Sometimes they feel like they've reached out and they've been ignored. And these are really important voices to be heard, and that's one of the reasons that I'm running to be a voice for our community, not anything having to do with what I want to have happen. I want to see the people out there that I talk to every day get their voices heard. Education is a big key piece to that. Many people don't know how to attend a meeting with the city council or don't know how to appropriately, you know, put in their voice. So that educational piece could be really helpful, especially with our youth ongoing as well.
Thank you. And Jeremiah.
Hello.
Hi. Yeah, sorry, I'm here at the library at the coloring station, and some kids wouldn't need to cut something out for them. So, yeah, voices for sure. I mean, definitely children, their voices are not heard. They don't they're not unable to attend a public meeting. Public speaking is sometimes causes butterflies in people's stomachs. So we need to find a way to listen to the youth. That'd be great. And also senior citizens, it's kind of hard for them to sometimes attend public meetings, get out of the house now that it's going back to in-person, sitting at a city council meeting for four or five hours. You know, sometimes these city council meetings go past midnight. It's very late. And also, I mean, one of the voices is my voice. I mean, I pretty much say public comments on every agenda item. Sometimes I feel that my voice is heard. Sometimes I feel that, you know, my voice is unheard, but I bring a lot of good ideas to the table. And you know, I just think everybody deserves a fair trial.
Okay, thank you. And sorry I didn't announce it previously, but that was going to be our final question, given the time that we need to end at 2 o'clock. So so before we have you, the candidates, give their closing statements, I have a few remarks on behalf of the LWVBAE. Thank you to the candidates for running for office and for your participation today. I also want to thank our audience for engaging in our democracy. For further information about upcoming forums, the candidates, pros and cons, and positions on ballot measures, please visit our League's website, lvvbae.org or votersedge.org/ca. We invite you to join the League to help us engage voters and defend democracy. We do so much more than voter registration education. We work on issues like climate change, criminal justice reform, healthcare, and much more. Visit our website and social media accounts at LWVBAE. The deadline to register to vote is October 24th this year. You can register to vote online at the Secretary of State's website, sos.ca.gov. Vote by mail ballots will be sent to all registered voters from October 10th. Remember to return your vote by mail ballots by Tuesday, November 8th, Election Day, or vote in person at any of the Voters Vote Centers in Alameda County. We are encouraging voters to vote as early as possible. For more information about voting in this election, please visit our website, lvvbae.org/elections or votersedge.org/ca or the Alameda County Registrarer Voters website, acvote.gov. Now, the candidates will make closing statements. We will reverse the order that we began with, and each candidate will give a closing statement of one minute each. And so in that reverse order, then we will be beginning with Nick Pilch.
Right, thank you for that. I want to begin with my record and experience, a vast experience in Albany City Government. I urge you to look at my record. I'm endorsed by the mayor, the vice mayor, Preston Jordan, Aaron Tiedemann, by the School Board President Sarah Hinckley, by Brian Dawson, Bonnie Davidson, School Board Trustees, by Pete Moss, former mayor, by Jevonka Beckles, AC Transit, Elizabeth Echols, East Bay Regional Park District, Jesse Aragorn, Berkeley Mayor, Gabe Quinto, El Srito Mayor, and a number of other regional and local commission committee members and electeds. I urge you to support myself and John Micky and Robin Lopez. We're running as Albany Forward. AlbanyForward.org is where you can learn more about us. And since we talked about outreach a little bit, I just want to end by saying when I was on the council, I led a number of outreach efforts, including all the electronic wage that you can reach us now that we didn't have before I was a council member. So thank you very much, League Women Voters.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from John.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk with you all this afternoon. I'd really love to spend a little bit of time and just really highlight both the work that Robin and Nick have done on this campaign. I really am excited for Robin and his new adventures with his second child. I'm sad that he was unable to join us today. But Nick has been an incredible mentor to us both in helping us both come to the decision to run for office and also for working with us. We stand before you as independent thinkers with our diverse experiences, but we share common values. I'm endorsed by the Sierra Club as their number one choice for the City of Albany, the Alameda Democratic Party, the Albany Democratic Club, the current mayor and vice mayor of Albany, Rochelle Nassan, and Peggy McQuade, two of the council current council members who are stepping down. council current council members who are stepping down, a school board member, president Sarah Hinkley, Bonnie Davidson and Brian Doss, seventeen commissioners and committee members of the city of Albany today. I look forward to the opportunity to make Albany more inclusive, that is prepared for a more sustainable and resilient future. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Jeremiah.
Is this one minute or two minutes?
This is one minute.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Brian Doss, also from the Albany School District for endorsing me. I actually, I chose to not be endorsed by any anybody because I feel that's when the lines of corruption start. You know, once you're endorsed by somebody and then they contribute towards your campaign, then, you know, you kind of owe them a favor when you get in office, since they contributed, you know, five hundred dollars endorsing you, you know, sort of thing, then, you know, when you get to city council, kind of owe them a favor, you know, policy in their direction. So I chose to not be endorsed or take any contributions from anybody. So I feel that's where corruption begins. And if you want to meet me, I'm very approachable. I'll be on Solano Avenue every Thursday from the Solano Cleaning Center from two PM to five PM. If you want to meet me and come say hi. You can check out my Facebook and Instagram, Jeremiah Garrett Ingwello.
Okay, thank you. And now Jennifer.
Well, I just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for their time here today. And also Voters Edge. I also just want to thank all of my community members that have been pushing me to do this along the way and encouraging and their support. I urge you to check out more about me from my website, jenforalbany.org. And that's can be with one N or two N's or the number four spelled out four. So but please do go on there. It'll tell you a lot more information about me and about my endorsers. And I really do appreciate the endorsements that I've received and I'm very happy and thankful for my community and every, all of the volunteers who are helping and just really appreciate the opportunity to keep more women in government by voting for me as your first choice. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, please join me in a round of applause, at least virtually, for our candidates. And thank you all for attending. And have a good day.